Hello, and welcome to the Capitola Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October 2nd, 2025. This meeting is open to the public with both in-person attendance at City of Capitola Council Chambers at 420 Capitola Avenue, and remote viewing is also possible. The Planning Commission and staff are attending in person, and members of the public wanting to offer public comment need to be present. The public can live-stream the meeting on the city's website, on YouTube, or on Zoom following the link on the meeting agenda. As always, this meeting is cablecast live on Spectrum Communications, Cable TV Channel 8, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Mondays and Fridays at 1:00 p.m. on Spectrum Channel 71 and Spectrum Channel 25. Recording the meeting will also be available on the city's website after the meeting. Our technician tonight is T., and as a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. Can we please have a roll call?
Commissioner Howard? Commissioner Q? Commissioner Welch? Vice Chair Christensen?
Here.
Chair SD?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Now proceed with the agenda that's been published. There've been some additions and deletions, some additions actually, to the agenda. Items B and C on the additions list, they were set out earlier today, so everybody should have that. Item number three on the agenda is Oral Communications. Please review the section "How to Provide Comments to Planning Commission for Instructions." Oral Communications allows time for members of the public to address the planning commission on any consent item on tonight's agenda, or any topic within the jurisdiction of the city that is not on the Public Hearing section of the agenda. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the chair. Individuals may not speak more than once during oral communications, and all speakers must address the entire legislative body and will not be permitted to engage in dialogue. Is there anybody from the public that would like to communicate?
Hi, my name is Goran Klopic. I'm former security guard of Zeldas on the Beach, where I worked the front door with my black brother George. We kept it clean there during that time when I worked there. I had meetings back then, in those days, with Andrew Dally. Andrew Dally was the police chief back then. I pointed out that there were some corrupt guys around here in the businesses, and maybe also deputies involved in cocaine trafficking, and he was listening carefully back then to me and my explanations. So I just wanted to let you know that something like that was going on back then when I worked for Zeldas on the Beach. It's several, several years ago that I worked for Zeldas on the Beach there, but you should know that things like that occurred back then. But I hope that Sarah Ryan with her department now can start things off differently. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public that would like a comment at this point? Okay, we'll close the Oral Communications section onto item number four, Planning Commission and Staff Comments. Let's start with the commissioners. Any comments from any of the commissioners? No? Okay, staff?
Yes, I wanted to inform the Planning Commission that on October 8th, next Wednesday, we'll be hosting a community meeting at New Brighton Middle School. This community meeting will be focused on the city's efforts towards the mall zoning code update, as well as our 41st Avenue corridor study. So hoping to get the public to come out and participate. We're looking forward to figuring out what the vision is for the 41st Avenue corridor, and also building on what we're gonna kick off tonight in terms of the zoning update for the entire mall block. And so please help us get the word out, and look forward to seeing a lot of people there. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered by the Planning Commission to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time the Planning Commission votes on the action unless the Planning Commission requests specific items to be discussed for a separate review. Items pulled for separate discussion will be considered in the order listed on the agenda. Are there any items, commissioners, that you'd like to remove for separate discussion? No? Okay, we would need a motion then to approve the Consent Calendar?
Make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Vice Chair Christensen?
Aye.
Chair SD?
Aye.
Item number six, Public Hearings. Public hearings are intended to provide an opportunity for public discussion of each item listed as a public hearing. Following procedure is as follows. Number one, staff presentation. Number two, Planning Commission questions. Number three, public comment. Number four, Planning Commission deliberation. And number five, decision. First item on this, item A on the public hearings is 427 Riverview Avenue, and I believe Commissioner Christensen, you need to...
I will recuse.
Just to be clear, recusing because working for the architectural firm.
Yes, I work for Fuse Architecture. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with the staff presentation of 427 Riverview Avenue.
Thank you, Chair SD, and Planning Commissioners. Good evening. So before you, we have an application for 427 Riverview Avenue, which includes a design permit and coastal development permit. This is in the R1 zone. It is located along SoCal Creek and in between Riverview Avenue. Two photos here, two structures, two photos. One is located directly along Riverview Avenue. That is actually the current accessory structure pictured on the left. On the right, we see from an aerial located, taken from the creek side, is the primary dwelling itself. Both are two-story structures. And here we have the site plan, the proposed site plan. Hang on. Oh, that's the existing site plan, sorry. With the blue lines down the middle are a culvert and easement. They bisect the property and go underneath the existing home, as well as the existing accessory structure. And I'm gonna go through a set of existing and proposed elevations. There, like I said, there's currently two structures which would, as part of this project, be merged into a single one. So it makes it look like we have extra structures in here, but I'm gonna go through them. This is from, taken from Riverview Avenue, and the black and white images are the existing. This is taken looking from SoCal Creek. And this is from the north side, and this is from the south side. So the remodel includes a comprehensive replacement of the existing finishes, including using bamboo siding, stone panels, and metal seam roof throughout. New windows are thin-framed, and the tapered eaves that currently exist are removed, save for a portion of the rear deck, resulting in a distinctly modern style. The perimeter walls that surround the sides utilize similar bamboo and metal finishes for a cohesive site appearance. Thank you. And a quick note here on these plans in the purple above, that's highlighting perhaps the most signature change to this, to these structures or structure, which is the addition of a raised bridgeway, which effectively makes these two structures considered into a single structure. On the rear, shown here on the left-hand side, there's an area highlighted in orange. There's an existing upper-story deck there that would be demolished and replaced in kind, in terms of its extent. On the south face, which is pictured here, it does not include any type of privacy screening, and it is closer to the required setback that we would currently allow for decks. But again, there's an existing deck there. The Planning Commission could consider requiring some sort of privacy screening on the south face, but that is up to the discretion of the Planning Commission, and staff didn't make a recommendation or condition to reflect that in the report. The architect included a number of renderings, which we've also included. This is a rendering of the proposed elevation to the north along an existing public access alleyway that leads to the public pathway. In that orange, we've indicated where I believe there will be a, as part of the project, a new wall. There's currently a wall there today, and that would be replaced with new materials. And so I wanted to make that clarity to the planning commission and public that there would be another barrier there, so it's not gonna be open like that. But the rendering does well illustrate what that bridgeway would look like from that vantage point. And we have the existing and proposed floor plans shown here are, is the first level. The notable changes are a small reduction on the single story, or the first story of the primary dwelling. And on the right-hand side, you can see that there's a substantial remodel where they are effectively replacing one of the current garages with a carport that abuts the remaining garage space, and it effectively moves that breezeway access to the north side rather than down the middle. This is the existing and proposed, proposed on the top, upper-story elevation, or, sorry, floor plans. Again, purple marks the new bridgeway, and in this case, save for the bridgeway, there's very little in terms of additions or deletions to the space. And ultimately, this project is net neutral in terms of its floor area. They do not expand their floor area. And I just wanted to include their landscape plan. This property does abut either by public road, public access, or public access easement, has some sort of adjacent use that the public can use on three sides. So I did wanna just note both that rendering before, and on here with the landscape plan, what some of that would look like. So on the top there, split this landscape plan because it's so long, but up above, you can see the creekway is adjacent here. That would be the path. And they've created a functional open space that connects to that pathway, looks under the creek, has a fire pit, sitting area, and soft scape in between the pathway, a wall, and that open space. They're keeping the existing private courtyard that sits in between the two existing structures, and are proposing a single tree on this site, which should be a dogwood. It's located in that courtyard. Because of the large footprint, the easement that cuts through the back, as well as the culvert that goes through the middle of this property, staff is not recommending planning commission require any further trees on this site. And I wanted to just show another rendering that the architect provided. This again is from aerial looking from the position above the creek. And you can see how the massing, save for that bridgeway, is more or less preserved, but the exterior finishes are a dramatic change. With that, staff recommends the Planning Commission approve the project based on the attached findings and conditions of approval. I believe there will be some extended conversations here from members of the applicant team, and if the planning commission has any questions, I am available.
Any questions, commissioners?
Just a quick question. So with this new development, with the remodel here, is there's no new load being brought upon? Is that correct?
Sorry, I was a little distracted. Could you repeat that?
So with this new development, being upgraded here, there's gonna be no new load that's gonna be put upon the culvert?
The architect and their engineers have prepared some preliminary plans that show the placement of load that serve both this new bridgeway, which does create new load on the site, but what is most critical is where that load goes in relationship to the culvert structure. Now, what they're...
Why don't you put that first picture up that shows the easement underneath the buildings? It was on your first page.
Sure.
So we can understand. And my question's exactly the same.
And I think for this question, if you wouldn't mind if the architect came up to answer that. And I did wanna make it clear that Leila's with us tonight from our city attorney office, and available via Zoom, so...
Thank you.
Hey there. How's it going? Yeah, so I'm Dave Beecham. I'm from Fuse Architects. I can kind of assist in answering that question. There will be no further load placed on the existing culvert easement. The goal's to displace the, you know, new proposed load on either side via companion beam. There will be absolutely no work within the physical culvert itself. During the process, I'm working with Sean and Katie, we have reached out to Rock Solid Engineering, who provided us, you know, overall guidance on kind of how to handle and mitigate that load, as well as our structural engineer, Redwood Engineering. So again, the game plan is to kind of bridge over the existing eight-foot culvert and to displace the road, the load, onto, you know, two new footings on either side of that culvert.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just one thing on that. Just in doing that, it kind of, you know, overall just kind of reduces the overall impact in terms of maintenance, and welfare, and health, and safety for the community.
In the current plan, the existing foundations of both units stay. You're not touching the foundations?
That's correct. Yes.
And there's no, so you're basically not doing anything structurally to either of those units? It's all just cosmetic work?
Well, the only structure kind of piece that we're doing is because we have that bridge that's connecting, you know, the two buildings. So we will be, there will be structure tied into that, and that structure, again, won't be imposing any additional load on the existing culvert.
Okay, yeah. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay, now time for public comment. Let's start with the applicant. Is there anything else the applicant would like to say at this point?
The applicant's attorney is here today and has requested up to a 10-minute presentation.
Okay.
And has several slides.
On the conditions for approval, number eight, it's requiring a one-for-one replacement of the existing maple tree. We would like to request that we scratch that if possible. The game plan is to remove that maple tree to allow the bridge to connect the two structures, and we are planting a dogwood tree, as Sean mentioned.
and we are planting a dogwood tree, as Sean mentioned.
Could you clarify already saying that you're removing more or?
No, there's the condition, number eight, says prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall demonstrate compliance with tree removal permit authorized by this permit for the one tree to be removed from the property. Replacement trees shall be planted at one-to-one ratio. So we're proposing to remove the maple tree and then to plant the dogwood tree, as you mentioned.
Correct.
I'm just saying, one-to-one, in my mind, means that we would then need to replace it in kind with another maple tree of the exact size. Based upon the condition.
The dogwood would be the acceptable wildfire there.
Okay. Perfect. And then on number 30 of the conditions for approval, it says for new residential construction, this is not new residential construction, this is a renovation or modification of an So we're hoping that request that you reference in here won't apply, again, because it's a modification or renovation.
We'll look at that, but you can continue.
Okay. Thank you. And then 31, the address is wrong. I think you guys have 425 Capitola Avenue, and it should be 425 River View. And then again, I just want to reiterate that, you know, based upon Rock Solid Engineering's recommendation, the project will improve the site conditions, include better protection of the drainage facility by lessening the residential structure loads on it.
Also, today, several questions came up regarding condition of approval 35, and our city attorney took a look at that, and we actually have an added sentence to condition of approval number 35. So I'm going to have Sean pull that up. And I apologize, this was not available earlier when there, when your attorney asked if we had updates, but it was the last minute to address a concern. So on condition of approval number 33, we're suggesting that we add the sentence, this indemnification and hold harmless shall not be interpreted to extend to drainage or damage to the culvert or surrounding properties not caused by the construction, occupancy, and use of the project. So with that, we'll continue with public comment.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Derek Oliver. Good evening, staff. I'm counsel for Joe McLean and Terry Robbins, the owners of 427 River View Avenue. I hope you got my brief letter, and I had a chance to look at it. There were just too many details to leave out. It was an important story to be told, and I'm grateful that Terry and Joe wanted that story to be written and to come out, to hopefully prevent this sort of thing from happening again, not just in Capitola, but throughout the county as well. You just heard, and your questions were the right ones, what's the impact of this project going to be on this culvert underground? You just heard it's going to improve the site conditions. So there is absolutely no practical reason, and certainly no legal reason or jurisdiction for the city to impose a condition that says that a property owner must indemnify a public agency for damages caused to the private property owner's property or project caused by a public facility. And that's what this is all about. And for two years, a year and a half, that has been the demand. It's an unreasonable demand. It's an unconstitutional demand. It's a demand that is far beyond the city's authority, and we've gotten zero pushback or any evidence that says otherwise. No contractual documents, no legal authority, no section in the city code, no private agreement between the city and county, like a drainage services agreement. Nothing supports conditions 33 and 35. So ultimately, we'd ask that those conditions be removed as unwarranted, unconstitutional, illegal, and greatly unwise by attempting to place on private shoulders the public burdens of a public facility. It would not promote public safety, which is what the code is designed and what the city's police power is limited to do. It would jeopardize police power. So if you wouldn't mind indulging me for a few minutes, I just would like to go through some of the history because it does provide some context. So if we could just start with the first slide. I hope you all know this is the subdivision map from 1922. The highlighted parcels on there, two parcels there now consist of 427. These were subdivided in 1922 by Alan Rispin. Anyone who knows any history about the city of Capitola knows about Mr. Rispin. Next slide. And this is showing that these parcels were approved by the county for residential, it says residence CE, for residence and commercial uses, which includes 427 River View. So riddle me how you're going to develop 427 if there is an overground drainage ditch. And next slide, please. Here is the 1922 easement from the subdivider Rispin to the county for the drainage easement that, next page, that was accepted by the county. There is no documents that I've seen out of the thousands that disputes that the county is the easement owner. Next slide, please. I found this great document online, maybe the Historical Society for Capitola. It was a draft from 2004. Next slide. So this just talks about Rispin a little bit and his plan to expand Capitola. At this time, Capitola was not its own city, didn't incorporate until 1949, and Rispin was trying to make a quick buck, and everyone that lived in Capitola wanted to turn Capitola into a vacation destination spot for people coming from South Bay and San Francisco. And they wanted to develop these lots as much as they could. Next slide. You see, within weeks of buying Capitola, Rispin proclaimed a million dollars in forthcoming village improvements. Yeah, well, those never came. And then the news article just says, yeah, we're sort of turning this place around. And that was the goal. And in order to do that, you've got to underground this drainage facility so that 427, 419 Capitola, 402 Blue Gum, 404 Blue Gum, and many others running up the street could be developed. Otherwise, what's the point of having these parcels if there's a drainage ditch going through and that you can't develop? So at some point, clearly between 1922 and 1934, which according to the staff report for assessors' records that I've not seen, the house was built as of 1934. So sometime between 1922 and 1934, this thing was undergrounded. Fast return means max development. Next slide, please. Next slide. So in 1925, Rispin sold Lot 47, which is the landward of the two lots that now consist of 427, 1925. Next slide. And then in 1927, Rispin sold the Creekside parcel. Next slide. And then now we're back to the history. 1928 news headline, "Capitola Sewer Broken and No One to Mend It," sums up a chronic problem. Sound familiar? Next slide. So as the staff report indicates, the single-family dwelling, according to county records, was constructed around 1934. And then in 1971, the Planning Commission approved a two-story accessory structure, adding the rumpus room and the garage. Next slide, please. And then here's a photo, and in the corner, sort of hidden by the trees, there's 427. So the house was certainly there by 1948. Next slide. And this is part of the county district, flood district resolution to create Zone 5. And by Zone 5 creation, which by the way, required formal action and consent by the city of Capitola and the SoCal Creek Water District, Zone 5 voluntarily and legally took full responsibility for all existing and future drainage facilities in the city of Capitola. So they're the easement owner. No evidence to the contrary. They're responsible for all drainage facilities in the city of Capitola. No evidence to the contrary. Next slide, please. Next slide. And then in 1970, the district began imposing drainage fees, assessments, to cover the cost to maintain, repair, and improve and expand the drainage facilities. Next slide. And then, yeah, failure to pay is a lien on the property. So folks in Capitola have been paying fee assessments upon a triggering event, which means that they've done development that expands the footprint of their house and increases the impervious area. And so they took money for it. Next slide, please. And this is the accompanying letter from the county staff to the board ahead of the approval of the resolution to impose drainage fees. And at the bottom there, he says, "From this rate, we can expect about half the total improvement cost to be paid for by drainage fees collected from now until 1990. The remainder of the improvement costs would be paid for by funds resulting from assessment districts." Okay? Next slide. Here's the Planning Commission approval of the addition of the rumpus room by former Capitola mayor, the Arthurs, Bruce Arthur and Nita Arthur. Next slide. There's the permit card approving it. The next piece is part of that permit. No conditions anywhere near like what's being imposed now. Next slide, please. And then in 1984, the letter says 1983, but it's 1984. Councilmember Beltrum raised an issue, raised this issue, saying, "The county is saying, you can't build anything over these facilities." And he goes on to say, "I don't think that's right. I'm a lawyer, I'm a real estate developer, and I think the county's position will not prevail in a legal action. So let's see if we can work something out." So next slide. Next slide. And then here is what was worked out. This is the county public works director writing back to the city manager at the time, saying that these houses can be redeveloped by simply including a deed restriction that's similar to the city's standard indemnity. This says, "The property owner shall indemnify the city for all damages arising from the construction and use of the project." Not the other way around. This condition before, we just looked at it, and I'm not sure it's necessary because the original indemnity says what I just said it says, that it needs to say. Responsible for damages that you cause to others, not damages that the public causes to me. And so it seemed to be resolved in 1984. Okay, next slide, please.
Excuse me, Mr. Oliver, but we did allot you 10 minutes. I'll give you two more minutes. You're halfway through, a third of your way through to your presentation.
Okay. Yep.
Get to the bottom line, please.
Yep. Well, the bottom line is, is this fight appears to be one attempted to be passed off to private property owners. You probably know about the dispute between the ownership and the cooperation agreement to try to resolve that dispute. Well, there's certainly been cooperation, and that is, again, to try to pass the buck to the private property owners. As detailed in the letter, the city has zero legal authority to impose condition 33. There's no Capitola municipal code or any other police power authority for it. It violates Capitola's municipal code because it threatens not promotes public safety. It's unconstitutionally disproportionate, and it's an extortionate exaction under the Nolan and Dolan tests. It's prohibited by the Permit Streamlining Act because no such condition was requested, no easement consent was required on the permit form, on the application form. If it's not on the form, you can't ask for it. It's also an unconstitutionally arbitrary and capricious disparate treatment because right across the street of 419 Capitola, a bigger project was redone with no such condition. It's also an unconstitutional impairment of contract by essentially forcing the property owner to amend the terms of the 1922 easement, which is a contract. And again, I've seen zero evidence or law of any sort to the contrary. The same can be said for condition 35. And then I get to the how. How can the city do this? If the city, as the county asserts, the drainage facility is not within the county's easement area, and the county says, as it does, that it has no responsibility for the drainage facility, then how can the city impose the county's drainage facility-related conditions purporting to protect interests that the county disputes having? Number two, how can the property owners comply with obtaining consent from a rights holder who denies having any such rights? And I guess the better question is why? The county doesn't need the city to do the county's bidding. It just wants the city to do so. It shouldn't do that. The city would face significant legal and financial consequences at the taxpayer's expense if the county does the city's bidding, if the city does the county's bidding. And if the county chooses to assert drainage easement and drainage facility rights, it can do so on its own, and the proper place is not within the city's permitting process. This is outside of that process, which is why the application doesn't say anything about easements in it, about third-party easements in it. There's a reason. And if the county does impose conditions that make my clients responsible, it would thwart public safety. And again, if the county decides to assert those rights, then the benefit of you all, the decades-long drainage facility ownership and maintenance responsibility dispute and disincentives would end. They'd have to stand up and take responsibilities, which I think the city wants them to do. So again, these two conditions jeopardize public health and safety. So we would just ask that these unconstitutional and unwise conditions be removed from this project.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can we pull up the, I hate to hit you here, this is the last minute, but the wording change that we were proposing? Because I think it sets it back to what you just said about the typical language on a property, right? It's where on that red remarks, I think the city's trying to limit the indemnity to damages that the construction or operation causes to the culvert.
Yeah.
Right? So it limits from the previous, all the other stuff, you're wide open to problems, but we limited it, or we're trying to limit it, to things that you do, not that other people do, including the county.
Yeah. So I mean, it's just internally inconsistent, right? The fifth line, including damage to the project. I would strongly suggest that just this be simplified, that says, as I said-
Keep a little closer so we can get a-.
Should be simplified, that the property owner agrees to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the city from any damages caused by the construction or use of the project.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Period. This is a bunch of mumbo jumbo.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, and the last one, 35, the- Oh, and the last one, 35, the consent, I think, is a moot issue. If we look at 35, unless there are last-minute changes to that one, it says that the property owner shall get consent from the easement holders, so we don't even know who that is, including the county. I only know of one, for construction in the easement area. Well, the easement area originally was eight feet on the first map. The box culvert underground now is eight feet wide. So I take that to mean anything in the box culvert. But we just heard there is no construction going to happen in the box culvert. So beyond the illegality of that condition, it's irrelevant. It should just be removed. Thank you for your consideration.
Right. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comments? Oh, right, the owners.
I think it's all been said, but as a citizen of Capitola, resident, I would like to see focus put on streamlining this arduous process. We have spent tens, so much money on this, and so much time, and cycled so many of these people's time unnecessarily, in my opinion. I understand that you have to rely on the attorneys who are advising you, but when we're paying for conversations that are around Joe and I taking on financial responsibility to move the public utility, that that conversation costs us $5,000, almost $5,000. So your attorney is advising you to impose these type of impositions on somebody who just wants to remodel their house. I understand there are special circumstances with the culvert and whatnot, but also being advised to basically break black-letter easement law. We've been discussing this for a year. It's black and white, this easement law. Why are we even spending time, why are you paying them to spend time cycling back on this with us? Yeah, I mean, we love this city, and this is why we both sold homes independent to purchase these homes, to remodel and spend our retirement years here. Now, we spent three years going round and round on this. So I really hope that you guys take into consideration, just reevaluating. And I want to also call out Sean, who has been in the line of fire, poor guy, the associate planner, who, we appreciate your work. I know it's been challenging, but somebody take a load off that kid's shoulders. Like, this is crazy. Yeah, just wanted to shout out there. So anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comments? Anybody want to say anything about this project?
My name is Michael Reardon. I'm a neighbor of the McLeans', and I'm not going to address any of the complex issues you've been discussing. I have a hard time understanding it all. I'll just tell you one thing. Look at the remodels they did on 425, the other house next door. It's beautiful. And so they don't do junk, they do quality. So I'm not saying that will address all the issues, but I think it should be given some consideration. Thank you.
Good evening. I think you should approve the project without the illegal Condition 33, at least the way that it's drafted, as proposed this evening. The applicant's attorney is absolutely right that both the Permit Streamlining Act forbid these sorts of illegal conditions, and these sorts of conditions are illegal takings under Nolan-Dolan, which is a constitutionality test that has to do with takings of private property with respect to public actions such as these. If the city were to go down this path, I know that there would be many public interest organizations, such as Pacific Legal, who take an interest in fighting these very types of illegal takings sorts of issues from cities. And I don't think the City of Capitola really wants to be in a position to be fighting deep-pocketed private organizations who take pride in preventing this sort of illegal activity. I know it's a common practice across the state to impose conditions of approval like this, and a lot of developers accept them because they just want to move their project forward, and it costs a lot of money to be tied up in delays associated with disagreements. But it's pretty clear that these sorts of conditions of approval, especially indemnity clauses, are unconstitutional and illegal under both, under the Permit Streamlining Act as well. So again, I just encourage you to move forward tonight without such illegal conditions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I'll bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation. Who wants to go first?
I'm empathetic to the applicant and the architect. They've done a lot of great work on this project. And just reading, reading over the history of it, it seems like it's been going on for quite some time on there. However, we do have to balance that kind of public safety. And the taking, to me, seems a little bit far right there. I feel like it's more of a, like a risk, you know, tool in that sense. And we do have to consider the ramifications if anything were to happen to that culvert and it expands out to the community. On that, I feel that the indemnity clause right there is, you know, that blank statement is kind of broad, and I would prefer to see it, or make a recommendation to have it more specific and narrow, to only have, like in the amendment said earlier, just on construction-related impacts on there.
Hey, PJ?
Yeah, hey, is anybody here from the county? Is the city representing the county?
No, the county is aware that this is on the calendar tonight, but there is not any representation.
Well, that gives me a little insight to the process here, so.
That I know of. Is there anyone here from the county? No, okay.
Yeah, come on up. I'd like to hear what you have to say specifically about how you've maintained the process, the culvert in the past, and some of these concerns about the culvert that has caused, the culvert itself has caused great harm to the city, so. But having said that, do we have any other areas where this culvert runs over? There's a number of homes the applicant mentioned where we have this type of process in place?
There's several homes that this culvert goes under between, it runs through the lower parking lot and across Capitola Avenue, and I think it's under either four or five properties.
I'm familiar with that. I'm just curious, do we already have precedence of this type of request of work being done on homes where we've asked for this type of indemnification?
I am, Leila, could you step in on this one? Do you know if there's precedence? I know that I haven't looked at all five properties, but.
I'm not aware of precedence for the five properties in Capitola that run over this, but, you know, we'd have to go back and take a look at the previous permits that were issued. I can say, like, this is pretty standard indemnification language. It does add the element of recognizing that, you know, there is an assumption of the risk factor here of building on top of the culvert. But I do want to clarify that the condition itself only indemnifies the City of Capitola, and any indemnification or hold harmless with the county would, you know, occur outside of this process.
If there was something to be damaged with the culvert, let's say that the applicant's property caused, why would the city's responsibility be in that when it belongs to the county?
Well, that is a topic of ongoing conversation with the county. You know, there have been kind of, I think, joint efforts discussed about how to work on the culvert as a long-term project. Again, it's been the city's position that this is a county facility, but that has not been adjudicated. So this is kind of a protection for the city just in case it was ever determined that this was actually the city's facility.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Another question on easements. So there's a number of utility easements throughout our city, throughout the county, throughout the state. Is this a standard practice for other easements? Maybe that's an attorney question, I don't know.
Sure, I can take that one. Yes, it is pretty standard. You know, we see it in, I think, the classic example, it actually came up maybe about a year ago on this planning commission. But, you know, was a situation where, you know, a homeowner was proposing to do an addition, and that addition was going to, or was already encroaching upon someone else's property. And so, you know, the planning commission ensured that the property owner had permission from their neighbor. And luckily, they, you know, had a good relationship and were able to work out something. But that is, you know, kind of part of the findings for design permits, and also, you know, generally ensuring that impacts to other properties are avoided when these projects come in. In an effort to kind of get the ball rolling on this effort and not just have the applicant needing to, you know, go to the county and get their permission, city staff, as well as my office, did coordinate and negotiate a draft indemnification agreement that the county was willing to sign. And it did include most of the indemnification terms that you see. It was obviously a longer document, that it also included some language specific to the county. But, you know, the county has been at the table, at least historically. Sometimes they're a little hard to get a hold of, but we have been able to, you know, discuss these matters with them. And again, there was a draft indemnification, that agreement, that would have been between the city, the county, and the applicant here. And that was really an effort to kind of, to help the applicant. And I understand that, you know, these things unfortunately are expensive, and I understand, you know, lawyers are expensive. I wish, you know, we weren't. But, you know, there were a lot of hours spent to try to streamline the process for the applicant. And I definitely know staff spent a lot of time really trying to find a solution here. It's just a tough location, you know. So forgive my digression there, but just wanted to add that context.
I'll wait to hear what your person is saying.
Well, yeah, I'm, let's start with the planning commission's jurisdiction, what we're supposed to be doing here. We're supposed to be looking at this application and reviewing it for, you know, consistency with the city's land use plan and the city's plan in general, and the local use plan that we have from the Coastal Commission, making sure it fits into the, fits into the neighborhood and all the other things associated with our, you know, objective standards and all that. As far as I'm concerned, that's fine. This is a great design, fits in with the community. I think somebody said that they've done another project, it all looks good. So we're down to, you know, this issue of, this legal issue of Condition 33, I guess 35, but 35 makes no sense to me, actually, because they already have it. So from 1922 till, so they've had it for a century, I guess. And the real question I have is, on 33, do we accept, I don't think we accept the language that's written here. But these folks, everybody collectively here, has gone, what, two years? Trying to figure out what to do on this thing. So I'm kind of like stuck in the middle of like, wow, we send them back to the drawing board? I don't think we should approve it the way it is. It's, I think it's too wide open, like you said. Or do we accept the, if you can bring it back up again, accept the additional language proposed, I guess, by the city's attorney today, bringing it kind of at the last minute? So we tried to come up with a description of this indemnification that explains its limitation to just the construction and operation. If you read, the language of 33 is pretty long-winded, but that is what it says. So I guess I would, my thoughts are we would add that and move on. We do have, we have a couple nitty-gritty things, like the tree thing, paragraph, the condition number eight. I think the architect is right, that we don't really need that. They're already doing it.
I would, I would like to, I'm new, new back to this, so bear with, work through this process of trying to prepare a motion. But I think this, one, the county's not here, that's a big statement to me. If this is a concern of theirs, two, it's a utility. They, there's an easement that they have. We have easements all through the cities, and specifically the village. Gas lines, electric lines, all types of water lines, all types of utilities that are out there. And I think this sets a precedence that, I don't know if we're open to putting applicants through the type of turmoil these people had to go through with attorneys. So for me, I don't see a problem how it's going to hurt Capitola. I'm more concerned about the culvert hurting Capitola, to be quite honest with you, based on precedents in the past. So I would be of the mindset to look on the wording to construct more about indemnification during the construction process to protect the city. Quite frankly, I don't really have any thoughts about the county's process since they weren't here, and I don't know why they wouldn't represent themselves if they're concerned about damage to their culvert. But I think our job is to represent the city, and I think we would be doing our due diligence. It looks like they've covered the bases through the other processes of just by protecting the city during the construction process. So I would like to make a motion of that nature, if that works with you, and we can work on the wording.
Okay.
So I think we should be really clear on what that wording is so that we can have it in the record and amended. I, so I think we should maybe, if you're looking for-
So let me ask you, the way it's worded now, up at the top, it says, "Liabilities arise in project construction occupancy and use." So you're proposing we strike occupancy and use and just be construction?
Yes.
Okay, that's one, one thing, that helps. Yeah, I would agree with that. I presume the other legal language in here is standard indemnification clauses we have in other contracts with other entities for other reasons that the city interacts with. The, for example, the paying of all the attorney's fees, et cetera, et cetera. Is that a correct statement? I guess asking the city's attorney about that.
Yeah, that would be tied to any damages, if so, during construction. They would be responsible for their defense fees?
That's how I read it, yeah.
Correct. And the occupancy and use language is really intended just to cover any actions taken during the occupancy and use that would not arise to the level of a new construction or a project that would get reviewed by the city just to ensure that, you know, no one is digging or doing anything that would potentially, you know, cause damage or put extra load, you know, depending on where things end up being placed onto the culvert. The-
But isn't the city covered by people doing stuff without a permit from the city? So why do we worry about that now? This is an application for a remodel of an existing old building.
Yeah, again, it's really just because it's on top of this culvert that, you know, our recommendation, this is obviously just our recommendation, was to include the occupancy and use. And of course, you know, the planning commission has, you know, the discretion to determine, you know, how this would be worded. But that's just- to, to determine, you know, how this would be worded. But that's just kind of the reasoning. But I just wanted to share the reasoning behind it.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And then the, the operative phrase that, you know, we'll, we'll probably want some clarity on is just the including damage to the project, because I believe that is the, probably the phrase that is of concern to the applicant.
Okay. Let me, let's go, let me go to something else. Condition 30, I don't, it says for new residential construction and implies they gotta spend more money than the money they've already spent on this with certificates, et cetera, et cetera. This is not new construction. It's already, the original additions were presumably in the floodplain and had some sort of work like this done. So they have to do it again?
Yeah, so...
You have a jump group.
Yeah, it's, it's my impression that when these, at least when the original structure was constructed, it was not to FEMA standards in the 30s. And many of the existing structures throughout Capitalist Village and surrounding area would not meet today's floodplain management requirements. I would, I would think that the changes here are not going to be problematic, given that the only additions are raised and on the second story.
Right.
It is, I think, ubiquitous when we have projects within the floodplain that these types of conditions are applied. There are, there are a number of floodplain management requirements, not just to new construction, brand-new construction, but also when there are additions or renovations of spaces to a certain percentage.
Okay, so you, you're saying the, I understand what you're saying. Obviously, the rules have changed, FEMA flood maps, et cetera, have changed. But the wording does say new residential construction, so it's not what these people are doing.
Yeah, they're doing an extensive remodel and changing areas of the footprint in which this is triggered. So we require this within the floodplain and it's a standard condition. We should change the for new residential construction language and for this, for, for the extensive remodel, we could reword it. But this is a requirement within our floodplain.
Okay. All right. That, that makes sense to me if we can reword it. Okay. Capturing all of that.
We can, we can delete the first section, the intro of for new residential construction located within the floodway, floodplain floodway. We'll just say elevation certificate shall be provided at the following stages. Okay?
Okay. So with that, does somebody want to make a motion on this?
Can I, before you do, may I comment on the, the conditions not related to the culvert that were raised earlier? I did look at them. The number eight regarding the tree requirement, that is a fairly standard requirement anytime there's going to be trees removed and a replacement requirement applied. It's effectively a boilerplate requirement that we ensure that tree plantings are affected before the conclusion of a project. It is a bit redundant, but that's the premise behind it, is that it's really emphatic in there. So we, it could be removed. You're, you're correct that we do look for this before finals. But again, that, that's the case in every time it's applied. And then regarding number, okay, we covered number 30. And finally, number 31, they're, they're correct about that. It should be, Capitol should be replaced with River View. We're supportive of that change.
Sorry, say that again, please?
Condition number 31, there was a typo regarding the property address. It said 425 Capitol Avenue, and they were correct. It should read 425 River View.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Just wanted to make sure your motion reflected decently. That didn't make a lot of sense.
And then if we could go through exactly how you would like this changed?
Yeah. I mean, I would love to see that more streamlining, more concise and cleaned up, specifically around saying like the applicant shall identify, defend, and hold harmless the city from claims of damages directly resulting from applicant's construction activity, negligence, negligence, or failure to follow approved plans. That material impact the drainage culvert or easement around there, similar to what you have down there, but just a little bit more streamlined. I'm fine with that. Yep.
Yeah, that, that sounds good.
Leila, was that clear to you?
I mean, I'm trying to figure out the best way to ensure that it's transcribed. I don't know if you have that written down or if...
Yeah, I, I could repeat it if you need.
If you could just read it slowly into the record, that'd be really helpful.
So the, the amendment to condition 33 is the applicant shall indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the city from claims or damages directly resulting from the applicant's construction, activity, negligence, or failure to follow approved plans that material impact the drainage culvert or easement.
Good job. What's the, when you say activity, what does that mean?
Like, in any additional construction or activities like that digging that was brought up earlier.
Not, just only during the...
During construction.
Construction they're gonna do this time, not, not some future construction 20 years from now. Okay.
We don't want the applicant to be on hook for things that...
Right. Yeah, I'm, I agree. We need to make it clear. This, that, the last sentence in this thing, obligations survive the permit issuance forever. I want to get rid of that. Right? And you're trying to do that? Okay. Is that clear? The attorney?
Then with doing that, we, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes, as long as we have a way to get that into the record, Katie.
Yeah, I think, Rosie, that was clear into the recording.
Correct.
Okay. Can we tackle condition 35? Do we need it?
I don't believe we need it. I don't think we need it.
Okay. I, I agree. It's a century old. Okay. Now, does somebody want to try to make a motion? Sorry, we, we, you've already had your say. It's our turn. Sorry.
Leila, did you have a comment on, is it 30?
Thirty, thirty-five? The getting permission from the county who's not here tonight, doesn't seem to care? We seem, they already seem to have a permit to, to construct things over the easement based on the history of this property.
That would be kind of an assumption of the risk on their part. And somewhat of a, a kind of diversion from the, the city's normal practice. But again, that's up to your discretion.
Okay, thank you. What do you all say? You want to make a motion? One of you?
Sure, I can do it. I think, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the project with the wording changed in item 33, that my colleague here did a great job of wordsmithing, I think, to help us out. And then I think number eight, we agreed to the tree change, right, of a dogwood instead of a maple tree. The address change in item 31 and eliminate item 35.
I think we agreed item, or condition eight was okay as is.
Condition eight is fine, yes. It just had a word change of maple tree, right? I mean, I think that was the only issue there, so.
Okay.
So I'd make that's the motion. Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Q?
Aye.
Commissioner Welch?
Aye.
Vice, excuse me, Chair Estee?
Aye. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for your patience and indulgence with us on that one. We'll move on to item 6B, the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. And we need to get Commissioner Christensen back somehow. Give us a second and we'll see if she's outside. Okay, we're back. Now we're gonna go on to item number 6B, Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. And a presentation from our, I guess, our consultant, Ben Noble.
My name's Ben Noble. I'm a city planning consultant assisting the city with the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. So also joining us via Zoom is Ryan Call, who is an architect with Urban Fields Studio, who's assisting with this project. We also have on Zoom Jameis William with Merlot Guyer Partners, the major mall property owner. All right. So presentation's gonna start with some background information on this project. And then we'll dig a little bit deeper into some of the major mall redevelopment design considerations that we're focused on as we proceed with the zoning code amendments for the mall property. So in 2024, the city adopted its housing element, part of the general plan. And that housing element contains programs that require a number of different zoning code amendments. In 2024, the city adopted a set of zoning code amendments. And then in September of 2025, amendments to the residential multifamily or RM zone were adopted. Another program that needs to be completed in 2025 are Capitola Mall amendments. And these amendments need to be aligned with the housing element available sites inventory. And they need to implement program 1.7, which I'll get into a little more detail on. The housing element needs to identify adequate sites to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation arena for the planning period. On the screen is a table that summarizes Capitola's arena for the 2023 to 2031 planning period. And in total, it's 1,336 units. And there need, need to be adequate sites identified at different income levels, as shown in this table. Here's a map that shows the location of these sites as identified in the housing element to accommodate that arena. There are the sites that have the pink-purple outline. And as you can see, they're concentrated along 41st Avenue, Bay Avenue, and Capitola Avenue in the city's existing commercial and mixed-use districts. Here's another table that shows how the sites inventory applies to different areas. So the majority of sites are within the Capitola Mall property. So almost 70% of the units identified in the sites inventory are located on the Capitola Mall site. The remainder are on other sites within the city and with ADUs. And as you can see on the bottom row, the total number of units identified in the sites inventory exceeds the arena by a considerable amount in order to provide a buffer as required by state housing law. So now Katie's gonna go into a little bit more detail in terms of how we arrived, or how the city arrived at the specific numbers for units on the mall site.
Okay, thank you, Ben. If we could go back one slide, just quickly, I just want to show within the arena numbers for lower income, we're required to have 712 sites or units. We, within our sites inventory, we have 726. So not much of a buffer there, 14 units. For moderate, at 169 was the requirement, and our total was 210. So again, that's about 40 units of a buffer. When you look at above moderate, this is the units that are built at market rate. That's where the really large numbers come in, and that has to do with feasibility of project sites and especially on the mall site. So that will go to the next slide. But I just want to make it really clear, the low and very low, we don't have much of a buffer on, which is important, because as projects build out, if they don't meet the arena, we have to find other sites to accommodate for those missing units. So it's good to have a buffer. So within the Capitola Mall sites inventory, the entire block is over 1,700. The Merlot Guyer parcels are around 1,100. And the question that has continued to come up is how did we get here when our initial number in total was 1,336? Next slide, please. So in our initial submittal to the state, on the mall site, we had the lower and moderate, 600, or 368 and 109 units. That was 65%. And above moderate at 257, which was 35% of the total for the, the six out of the 12 sites, five, five of which were Merlot Guyer sites. When we submitted this to the state, Merlot Guyer submitted a letter questioning, just saying this isn't reasonable. We need more, you know, we need more above moderate product in order to create all of these lower and moderate income house or units. So after getting a correction letter from the state, if we can go to the next slide, the city updated, we thought about, well, how do we get to that number, knowing that we had recently done a study, a feasibility study in 2019 around our housing impact fees and our housing in lieu program. And so, running the analysis on this, we found that if they were to provide 20% at lower income and moderate, then the above moderate should be at 80%. And that covers the cost of creating all of the lower income units. So that, in doing so, the lower and moderate numbers stayed about the same, where the above moderate escalated to get to us to that number of 1,777. So, next slide, please. So from there, I'll let Ben take it over.
Right. So just going back to this, this slide, with the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments, we need to make sure that the zoning that applies to the property can reasonably accommodate up to 1,000... up to 1,777 dwelling units on the mall property overall. So that's part of what we're thinking about with this exercise. We also need to follow through on what Program 1.7 says. And I have two slides on this. In summary, by the end of 2025, the city needs to develop land use policies to facilitate shopping center redevelopment with a strong sense of urban design cohesion, to define Capitola Mall as all properties between Claire Street, 41st Avenue, and Capitola Road, to allow for building height up to 75 feet for mall redevelopment, to define mall redevelopment to mean a mix of uses that includes residential and retail commercial components, to exclude parking garages from the project FAR calculations for mall redevelopment, and lastly, to adopt objective development standards to facilitate mall redevelopment.
So just, crazy question. What stops us from putting in a upper limit of 125 feet?
For height?
Yeah. I mean, just curious. What's this, where did 75 come from? I know we put it in the housing element, but is there a limit?
So I think Katie will answer.
Yeah, so that's based on density and also an understanding that the ground floor could be commercial. So within the HCD's calculations of, we actually just went through this with the multifamily zoning. For every 10 units per acre, the HCD likes to see another 10 feet in height. So when we were doing our multifamily high density at 40 units per acre, they wanted to see us go up to 40 feet. With this project, I think at the higher end, at 65 units per acre, and therefore, there was a range, I'm sorry, I think it was 48 to 60 units per acre were the assumptions in the housing element. And so with, at 60, that's 60 feet plus an additional 15 for ground floor commercial.
Right, so we'd have to change the density, density for this zone or all the CR zone, right, in order to go higher, basically? Get it to two things at once.
And we do not have density limits in this zone, so we won't be changing the density. There's endless densities. But if you wanted to go to 110 feet, you could, and this would be the time to give us that feedback.
Okay, thanks.
So that's what Program 1.7 says. On September 11th of this year, the city council had a meeting to consider some options for how to move forward on completing Housing Element Program 1.7. They considered a very streamlined, minimal process. They also considered a more involved process, including the preparation of a form-based code for the area. And at the end of the day, the council selected the option to complete the zoning code amendments within a three-month timeframe, while also fitting in some enhanced community outreach to provide for additional public participation through this process. So the council provided the direction at their September 11th meeting on the process and the timeframe to prepare the Capitola Mall zoning code amendments. So we're expecting that these amendments will include changes to the zoning code, as well as some changes to the general plan land use element to bring the land use element into alignment with what the housing element says for the mall property, as well as with what the zoning code includes to, for the mall property. So that's what we're anticipating. I think the zoning code amendments are gonna touch a number of different chapters within the zoning code. So when these come back before the Planning Commission later this year for your review, you'll be seeing some amendments to a number of different chapters in the zoning code. So there's the chapter where the allowed land uses and development standards for the CR zoning district live, that's Chapter 1724. You'll see some changes there. You'll see some changes to the parking chapter. Chapter 1782, which is where the objective standards for multifamily and mixed-use residential development live, you'll see changes to that chapter, too, with standards that are uniquely tailored to the Capitola Mall site. And then lastly, there's the existing Chapter 1788, which allows for increased height and other incentives for projects that provide a public benefit. That's going to be substantially reworked for the mall property, consistent with the direction that's established in the housing element. So you'll be seeing a number of changes to quite a few chapters within the zoning code when this comes back to you. And here's a slide that shows the overall scope and schedule. So we're at the very beginning. This is a kickoff meeting to introduce this project to you, receive some preliminary feedback. We're gonna be having a workshop next week, which I'll speak more to in the next slide. And then we're gonna dig a little bit deeper into the proposed amendments. We'll have another work session with you at the end of this month to share with you some more detailed ideas, to receive your feedback and public feedback as well. And then in November, we'll be coming back with the proposed zoning code amendment language for a public hearing. You'll make a recommendation on those amendments, which will then go to the city council for a hearing in December. So this is a pretty aggressive schedule, where we're trying to accomplish a lot of work within a small period of time, with the goal of completing the amendments by the end of 2025.
So one thing to add there, I had sent out an email, and we're hoping to have a meeting on October 30th, a special planning commission meeting, as well as November 19th, in order to meet these deadlines. So I'll bring that up at the very end as well, but October 30th and November 19th, special planning commission meetings.
Right. And so as I mentioned, there is a community meeting on October 8th, next Wednesday, at New Brighton Middle School. And this meeting will address both the 41st Avenue corridor plan, as well as these Capitola Mall zoning code updates. So we look forward to hearing more from the general public on these topics at this meeting.
And just to reiterate, that's coming, it's staff presenting updates of what the city's efforts are. Merlot Guyer Partners, at the time, like after we've adopted our updates and when they're moving forward with a project, that's when they would do a similar hosting of an event, similar to what they did in 2019, when they were launching their conceptual review. So just to be clear, this is a city-organized event.
All right. So now we'll move more into some of the content of what we're working on. Talk a little bit more about what the general plan has to say about the Capitola Mall site, some of the city's expectations for redevelopment proposals for the property, and then finally getting into some of the unique redevelopment design considerations for the mall property that we need to be thinking about for zoning code amendments. So in the general plan, there's a goal specifically related to the Capitola Mall. Goal LU8, and it says that the city will support the long-term transformation of Capitola Mall into a more pedestrian-friendly commercial district with high-quality architecture and outdoor amenities attractive to shoppers and families. And then there are a number of additional policies that elaborate further on that goal, envisioning a phased mall redevelopment with the replacement of existing surface parking lots with new buildings, the potential relocation of the metro center, the creation of new public gathering places, and new streets that are connecting the perimeter of the mall property and creating a new block pattern within the overall mall site. So the general plan establishes this existing policy foundation for the mall redevelopment. And here's a slide that's showing the boundaries of the Capitola Mall property. Overall, it's 46 acres. There are 14 different parcels with seven different property owners. So this is the area that we're looking at for the zoning code amendments. It's important to note that Merlot Guyer is the major landowner of the mall property. This map is showing the area that the city sees as available for redevelopment with a project from Merlot Guyer. So it includes land that Merlot Guyer has both ownership and full control over. And that area is about 20 acres total in size with three different parcels. So when an application for mall redevelopment comes in from Merlot Guyer, the city expects that that proposed project would be located generally within this air, blue area that's shown on the map.
And just to speak to that a little more, Kohl's has a long-term lease. It's a Merlot Guyer partner or property. I think Merlot, the number of acres that they own, I believe it's 32 out of the 46? Or somewhere about there? But you're seeing a little over 10 missing from this because of long-term leases and shared parking agreements and access agreements that can't be developed as of right now. So I don't know, Jameis, if you wanna add to that, but.
No, you covered it. You got the acreage, it's just shy of 32.
Thank you.
Okay. So given what the housing element says in terms of the site inventory with the number of units, as well as some of the specific language in Program 1.7, on the Merlot Guyer properties within the mall, the city is expecting to see proposals for buildings up to 75 feet in height of mid-rise apartment buildings, which is a very different building typology than what we're familiar with currently within Capitola. On other properties on the mall, it's a little bit less certain what the city might see from an application from those property owners. It could be similar to what we anticipate for the Merlot Guyer properties. It could also include lower-intensity apartment buildings, potentially residential mixed use, maybe townhomes, maybe standalone commercial. So as we're working on the zoning code amendments, we're anticipating the types of projects to expect on the Merlot Guyer property, but also some of the types of projects that could come forward in the future on other properties as well. So the city has a lot of, yes.
Back to your map again. The other folks, who would be most likely, the Citibank people? Because they own that bank plus the parking lot, I guess. I mean.
To develop?
Yeah.
Yeah, so then Citibank has sat vacant for a couple of years now.
Right.
And they've been trying to re-tenant that space. That could be a possibility. Citibank isn't really conducive to a restaurant. They've been trying to get different drive-through restaurants in there, but because it's too big for a drive-through restaurant. So that one's vacant right now. And yeah, that would probably be the most likely.
And the old Japanese restaurant, I forget what they are now.
Takara's owned by Merlot Guyer Partners, but because it's surrounded, that could redevelop within commercial there, but the parking lot that surrounds it has an agreement with the Target, so.
If I remember correctly, there used to be, I believe, it had to be an agreement from all the whole unit property owners for a project. Is that still the case? In other words, would Target and Macy's have to agree to the projects that are gonna be presented?
That's correct. They would have to agree to any project moving forward. And that's separate from the city process. Jameis, do you wanna add to that?
No, it's fairly standard in these malls and shopping centers that we develop, where these REAs and leasehold encumbrances have to be resolved for any project to move forward. And fortunately, we have these conversations with them quite frequently, and we're getting better at it. They're getting more cooperative as years go on. Some are easier to work with than others, but.
All right. So the city has a lot of existing regulations that apply to the mall property. The CR zoning district provisions apply to the mall property. And the objective standards that were adopted by the city several years ago also apply to the mall property. The challenge, though, is that those objective standards were prepared for a rather different type of development. So envisioning smaller infill projects, whether they're smaller apartments, townhomes, vertical mixed use, and not envisioning the mid-rise apartment buildings that we're contemplating for the mall site under the housing element. So for example, there are standards for parking placement that's illustrated by this diagram, where parking needs to be located or may not be located between a building and the property line, and in a townhome would be access from the rear of the site, for example. So envisioning that sort of infill development, and a standard like that may not work in all cases for a large site development in a mall redevelopment project. Another example is an entrance orientation standard, where the primary building entrance needs to front the street if the building is located adjacent to the street. For a small infill project, that's exactly what you want. For a mall redevelopment project, there may be cases where the primary entrance to a building, you would want that to be located oriented towards an internal public space rather than the adjacent street. So that standard may not work for all types of mall redevelopment projects as well. So I highlight that just to say that part of what we need to do with this exercise is go through all of the existing standards and make sure that they work for the sort of development that is anticipated and desired on the mall property. Another thing that we need to think about is the myriad of state housing laws that now apply in California. And in particular, laws that enable an applicant to request by right approval of development projects, where cities have to approve the development if it complies with objective standards and allows an applicant to circumvent a discretionary review process. So I think we need to be mindful that there's that potential for by right approvals for mall projects. And there's also other considerations with the Housing Accountability Act, the Housing Crisis Act, other state laws that limits a city's ability to deny a development project that's consistent with objective standards. So all of this is really making it very important that the city establishes good objective standards that will work for the type of development that the city wants to see for mall redevelopment.
So these are gonna be, these are gonna be applied to the mixed use? I mean, the zone that you're talking about, that, the, the regional commercial?
Yes, thank you. Is there a type of overlay that we can implement just for this parcel? Kind of like, you know, you have the village, the objective standards that we offer in that specific area? Is there a way to just have it so it doesn't have to affect the entire zoning?
That's a great point. So the height limit of 75 feet will only apply to this mall block. So the height limit of seventy-five feet will only apply to this mall block? So we'll be figuring out how to integrate that. But that's definitely one piece of this is, I'm not sure if it's an overlay or if it's just within the community benefits section, how we get there, but that will definitely be a piece of this, that it's one area. However, the objective standards without the height, you know, will probably apply to a lot of other redevelopment as we see Forty-first Avenue build out as well, without the extra height. Thank you.
Question on for those objective standards that is going to be done on a future date, at future, is that on that calendar, that accelerated calendar that you proposed earlier that we're going to accomplish? Or is that more of like staff?
That's part of this three-month exercise. But at the end of, by December, we'll be moving forward with adoption hearings for those updated objective standards.
So given that the city's objective and requirement under the housing element is to facilitate housing production, there's the need to be careful with these standards, to make sure that they don't become overly burdensome in a way that increases, unnecessarily increases construction costs or reduces the number of units or forces less desirable outcome or discourages housing production. And so I think that we're sensitive to that consideration, and it's something that we're going to be thinking carefully about as we proceed with this task. Okay. So now getting into more of the design considerations. So as I mentioned previously, the city's existing zoning code, and particularly the objective design standards that were adopted a couple of years ago, were prepared for a different scale and different type of development. For mall redevelopment, we're anticipating projects being proposed that are mid-rise apartment buildings, up to seventy-five feet, seven stories in height, a very different building typology in a large area. And so for that reason, there are some unique design considerations that we need to be thinking about and address in the zoning code amendments. And so here are some of them on the screen that we're thinking about now, and there's maybe others as well. And we want to start the conversation tonight on these about site layout and circulation, publicly accessible open space, parking, building massing, facade composition, ground floor, residential fringes. These are some of the unique design issues associated with mall redevelopment that we're thinking about. And so starting with site layout and circulation. So the mall, as I mentioned previously, overall forty-six acres with seven different property owners. We anticipate that at build-out, new internal vehicle and pedestrian connections will be needed, that there will be multiple new buildings in the area with new public spaces, and that redevelopment will be phased over time with multiple property owners. And so for those reasons, we think that new standards related to site layout and circulation that may be needed include the location of new streets intersecting property boundaries, requirements for internal street connectivity and internal pedestrian and bike circulation connectivity, potentially maximum block length standards. And in cases where block lengths are maybe a little bit longer than ideally we would want to see, to provide for mid-block connections for pedestrians where new streets are not possible. And so to illustrate some of these concepts, I have two example mall redevelopment plans on the peninsula, on the Bay Area, one in San Bruno, one in San Mateo. You may be familiar with these. Just to give you sort of a sense of some of the site layout and street circulation considerations for a mall redevelopment project. So here's Tanforan Mall in San Bruno, adjacent to 380 and the San Bruno Bart. And here's a diagram that's showing their site plan, creating a number of new blocks with new streets that connect the perimeter of the site and block lengths that typically range from about five hundred feet to about eight hundred feet. So you can see how they took this larger mall site, created new blocks and new internal streets with connectivity to the surrounding perimeter streets. Here's another example, Hillsdale in San Mateo. There's an air hill that's adjacent to El Camino Real on the peninsula. And here's a site plan that's showing the new block pattern and street layout, a somewhat finer-grain block pattern than what you saw in the Tanforan example. Typical block lengths ranging from about two hundred fifty to three hundred feet, but a few larger block lengths as well, about six hundred feet. And in those cases, you can see that there was new pedestrian connections that were included in the site plan, where even though streets were not possible, that internal circulation was facilitated with these new pedestrian connections. So I'm showing these not to suggest that Capitola Mall will redevelop like Hillsdale or Tanforan, but just to give an example of how on these larger mall redevelopment projects, new streets are introduced in a manner to create a block pattern for internal circulation and connectivity within the property. So we'll be thinking about that issue with our standards. We'll also be thinking about publicly accessible open space, particularly because of what General Plan Policy LU 8.4 says, which says that "The city shall encourage the establishment of public gathering places on the mall property, such as outdoor dining and courtyards, that provide space for people to informally meet and gather." Currently, within the zoning code, there are no standards for either private or public open space within the CR zone. So there's no rules existing on this particular topic now. We think it's probably important for the mall zoning code amendments to include new standards related to publicly accessible open space so it's clear what the city's expectations are for this part of a mall redevelopment. So we may include standards related to the minimum total amount of open space, the minimum size per area, if there are multiple open space areas within a redevelopment project, the location of these areas and their accessibility from adjacent land uses, and also potentially details related to design features and amenities that are required as part of these open spaces. So here is an example of a recently developed publicly accessible open space in the San Antonio Center in Mountain View that includes a dock park in a linear configuration adjacent to some apartment buildings and retail uses. So and here's another example of a smaller, more intimate space as part of a redevelopment project in Santa Ana. So you can see differences in these examples in terms of the size of these spaces, the sorts of amenities that are provided, and the way that they relate to the adjacent land uses. So we'll be thinking about that more as we proceed. Another issue that we'll be thinking about is parking. So within the objective standards of the zoning code, there are standards related to parking that aim to facilitate a pedestrian-friendly streetscape, walkable neighborhoods, to minimize the visual dominance of parking facilities and to encourage residents to walk and bike to destinations. All very applicable intent statements to the mall redevelopment project. But some of the particulars with the existing parking standards are really oriented more towards smaller-scale infill projects for different building typologies, similar to what I'm showing on the screen here that I talked about before with parking location. And so we think that for the mall site, that we need to be thinking more about the types of parking facilities that will be provided as part of mid-rise apartment building development. We think that within the mall area that we can expect or that we see within the mall area, a mix of new surface street and existing parking that may remain with redevelopments. We need to be thinking about that. And new buildings that will include both podium and potentially wrapped parking and potentially also a dedicated parking structure in the future. So in the mid-rise apartment buildings that we're talking about, typically parking is provided either through a podium or a wrap approach. And with podium, parking is on a lower level, often below grade, with apartment units above. And with wrap, parking is in the middle of the structure, surrounded by apartment units. So we anticipate that, at least for the Merlot-Geyer properties, that we can expect projects that provide parking in this manner. And so we need to make sure that the standards that we have for parking are appropriate for that type of development. So we think that we need to have rules for existing surfing, surface parking lots that may remain, potentially rules for dedicated parking structures if that were to happen in the future. And then for podium and wrap buildings, thinking about where the entrance to the parking is located, what the width of that vehicle entrance area is, visibility and screening of those, of the parking structures. And then also potentially lining public-facing ground level with active uses as well. So just here's some built examples of this type of parking. So here's a podium example, San Antonio Center in Mountain View. So it has two levels, I believe, of parking with apartments above. There's an interior courtyard area. And here you can see an example of the entrance to the parking area in the main building facade. Here's an example of a wrap parking structure or building. So you can see the parking is multiple levels in the interior of the building with apartment units surrounding that interior parking structure. And so here's the entrance to that wrapped parking or that particular project. So, okay. So I'm going to hand it over now to my colleague Ryan, who's going to talk about some of the more architecturally-related design considerations that we're going to be thinking about with these zoning code amendments.
Great. Thanks, Ben. So we're going to talk about a few different issues, in large part, massing, which is the form of the building in its entirety. We'll talk about facade composition, which is how you articulate or express that massing. And then we'll have the frontage, which is basically the first twenty, thirty feet of the building, which you experience at the sidewalk level or, you know, at eye level. So the spirit of your existing code is right on. Human scale, pedestrian-friendly building massing, large buildings broken into smaller volumes that fit into the fine-grained texture of the neighborhoods and nearby development. So, you know, our challenge is to take that concept and make it so that it's inclusive of these new building typologies that include the mid-rise housing format. Next slide. So the unique redevelopment considerations for the site, because it is of a large scale and because having, internalizing structured parking into the building itself, especially in the wrap form, it requires bigger buildings in order to achieve the kind of efficiency that delivers a financially feasible mid-rise building. So we will be looking at larger building footprints. We will be looking at taller buildings. And we will be looking at buildings that aren't just facing Forty-first or Capitola or outward. They'll be facing internal streets or public spaces. Next slide. So how do we, how do we bring these larger building typologies into a human scale and something that feels comfortable with the street and, you know, something that feels, you know, at scale with Capitola? And so we need to look very closely at the maximum building lengths, which was something that Ben brought up earlier. We want to make sure that the site is walkable, bikeable, easy to traverse. We're going to have to look at varied building heights, especially parapet modulation. So the building doesn't just have a straight flat top, that it has some visual interest kind of where it hits the sky. The modulation standards, we really need to be careful that as we write the objective design standards, that we actually don't create really repetitive buildings. I think that's been a mistake of some of the early objective design standards in our cities, is they'll say, you know, every thirty feet, do this. And it kind of looks like a cruise ship at the end of the day. So we want to avoid some of those issues that create repetition. And then larger, major massing bricks. I think this is really important. When you see a building that is, you know, three hundred feet long, in order to make it feel more of a human scale, there need to be some modulations of that overall mass. And so we'll show some examples of that in the following slides. Next slide. So part of this process involves finding good examples, finding projects that maybe we, to begin with, we think are great examples, but we want to hear from you and get your feedback. And that's part of this process. This one here, we thought did some really interesting things. They used contrasting colors, contrast in materials, and then also contrast in the building plane. You know, there's parts that come forward, there's parts that go higher to create visual interest and scale, so it doesn't feel like one large box. The other interesting aspect of this building, I thought, was kind of a very selective use of color. It is an accent piece, the blue balconies. They didn't put it everywhere. They kind of put it in a way that moved your eye around the building, but it didn't dominate. Next slide. This is a different approach. This is in South San Francisco, and, which is an older, more urban city. And kind of interestingly, the people there really value their downtown and the architecture in their downtown. This is not in the downtown, but that desire for that influence was expressed here with the brick. So you'll notice that even though this is a six-story building, the brick brings it down to the street and your eye goes to the brick. And if you're there in person, there's a lot of really nice detailing around how the brick is framed with the storefronts and the canopies. They really made sure that it was a very complete and nicely executed project. The other really interesting, I think, aspect of this is how they treated the corner. There is an element that's slightly taller. It pops the roof up. They have the building, the building corners expressed in a way that creates a small plaza. And they have a very judicious amount of retail in that one location. Next slide. This is another approach. For this project here, it's a single project, but they created essentially two material palettes. On the right, you have the earth tones, kind of color slightly different roof forms. And then on the left, you'll see more of the cooler colors, a different articulation at the base. And again, it's, you know, I think some of the essence of a lot of American cities is that a single block has multiple buildings, and that gives it visual interest and, you know, a diversity of expression. So kind of bringing some of those ideas but into a modern language and a modern construction type. Next slide. This is a project that takes a slightly different approach. They primarily use color to differentiate the lower massing from the upper massing. They also use some subtle terracing, not really extreme, but there's some slight setbacks at the upper levels that create terraces, which they adorned with trellises. So there's a mix of kind of big-scale moves and fine-grained, fine-grained scale moves that help give this building a more visual interest and make it more human-scale. Next slide. So the next scale in, you know, for massing, then we go to facade composition. And this is really introducing, how do you make the surfaces of these buildings, the textures of these buildings, you know, attractive and appealing? And again, I think your existing standards captures the spirit, but we need to really apply it to a more significant-sized building. Next slide. So this was, I alluded to this a little earlier. We want to make sure that our standards don't create this. And I think it goes without saying that... And I think it goes without saying that 300 feet of the same thing is something nobody wants. So we'll be careful not to do that in our codes. Next slide. So there are different approaches to bringing scale to facades. And we have some examples that we'll look at tonight. You know, one approach is to break the facade really into sections. And those sections can either be of a like or similar language, or they can express different facade languages entirely, which is somewhat like a more traditional downtown. So the other consideration, as we study this site and look at what the length of the facades might be, we might consider criteria that says, you know, if your facade is greater than 200 feet, you need X number of facade compositions or breaks. So those will be things that we'll be looking at so that we don't have, you know, the monotony of a single facade or box. Next slide. These are some different ways of thinking of how that's done. You know, this is where you use slight changes in plane or you use slight changes in material, but you create breaks between those moments so that there's a distinctive series of expressions along the length of the building, which will make it feel less horizontal and more interesting. And next slide. This is an example where you'll notice that the facade at certain points breaks back. And there's parts of it that come forward. And they've expressed those parts that come forward with different colors to create a rhythm along the street and can create a slightly more vertical expression within this larger horizontal building. I think the other really important thing that we see here is they very carefully designed the ground-level frontage, which we'll talk about in a second. But a lot of the, you know, the retail footprints have shrunk. There's less physical retail than we used to have. And so to create vibrant streets and active street fronts, this building here, for example, has introduced a lot of transparency into their amenity program, which could be fitness centers, lobby gathering places that help bring life to the street, and I think also helps sell the product. Next slide. So this example I wanted to show, this takes a fairly, you know, traditional approach to, to the architecture. It reads as a single design or a single building. But I thought what was nice about it is they break the primary facade into four sections. We go to the next slide. If you abstract it and you just kind of look at what the, if you squint your eyes and blur it, you get, you know, really an expression of four parts. And the corners have a really strong and shared expression. And the central part have a similar expression, but it's second to the corner. And I thought it was a nice way of breaking up this long building into composition elements that are more vertical. You'll also notice that within the A, there's, you know, secondary scale elements, such as the two-story base element on the corner with the canopy. This is where they further break down the expression of the facade to create visual interest in human scale. Same thing on the central B parts. And that helps those sections feel slightly more vertical and more human scaled. Next slide. This is a different approach. This is where it's a single building, but rather than have a, as a family of similar elements, they have a family of different elements. And so, you know, this in some ways simulates, I think subtly, a more traditional downtown approach where you would have different buildings with different facades. If you go to the next slide. You know, the, the corner and the flanking elements of that facade are, you know, kind of an expression of the building. And then you have a few other suggested, uh, facades that suggest a different facade language that help create visual interest along the street. You know, at this point in time, it's a brand-new building. The trees aren't mature. Nothing has any patina to it. So it clearly looks like a new project. But I think over time, as the trees mature, as the building patinas, it will help, it will look a little more natural. Next slide. So we've talked about the massing, overall massing of the buildings. We've talked about some ideas about how we may articulate the surfaces of the mass. The next part's really important. This is how those buildings come down to the ground. This is how they socialize the public realm and how the public realm responds to these buildings. Do you enjoy the experience or not? Your existing code addresses this largely in the context of retail ground-floor frontage. We're going to need to expand these definitions to include residential and non-commercial uses. Same things are still really important. Blank walls, transparency, ground floor height. These are elements that will, will be important considerations, whether it's commercial or residential. Next slide. Same thing, entrance orientation, entry design, blank walls. We're really taking the ideas behind those, but looking at how they're built in these buildings in a way that's, you know, financially feasible. We don't want the architects or developers to jump through hoops, but we do want them to kind of produce the essence of why these things are important. Next slide. Unique considerations. The frontage context could be quite diverse. There may be narrow streets inside the site. There may, well, we know that there are wide streets at the perimeter of the site. These, you know, different vehicle speeds, different privacy concerns. There will be different frontage requirements for those residential units to strike that balance between how to feel, how to feel some privacy in a very public environment. So we'll look at some ideas, you know, to address those variety of conditions that may occur throughout the site. Next, next slide. So, and I think, yeah, I think my, I covered this pretty well, Ben. This is just essentially saying 41st Avenue and Capitol Road have a particular character, as will the internal streets, and then vehicle-free streets, paseos. And then if there's parks or open space, those will, you know, need to be considered. Next slide. So, you know, we can learn from examples. Again, this is the Park and Paseo project that was shown earlier. This one creates privacy for the building with some of the building setbacks and these kind of forecourts that are on the street. They also have a very carefully executed streetscape with layers of landscape that help buffer both the traffic and pedestrian on the sidewalk, and then the residents, it's giving privacy. Next slide. If we have a condition where the right-of-way is narrower, this might be an internal street, we could end up with residences that are a little closer to the sidewalk. And so in those instances, you might want a raised plinth and having a little bit more security with the guardrail. And perhaps it's not something that you, you enter right out onto the street. And again, these are just showing that people have approached these problems in different, different means. I'm not advocating for a particular one. This is another example that's kind of interesting. The stair stoop is parallel with the sidewalk traffic. And it creates, you know, kind of almost two buffers before you get to the porch of the residential unit. Now, if those folks wanted to enter their unit from this, this porch stoop element, they could. It helps bring some life and activity to the street. Even though there aren't retail uses, this is something that can help the neighborhood feel a little more active. Next slide. So I'll hand it back to Ben.
All right. So we're, tonight, tonight is the night that we're starting the process. And so we're here to receive your preliminary feedback on material that you've seen tonight and was presented in the staff report. And we're going to use that feedback as we move forward with this process. So some of the questions that we have for you is, of the design considerations that Ryan and I talked through, are there certain things that are particularly important for you? Maybe there are additional design considerations for this scale of development that's important that we didn't talk about, that we should have on our radar. Maybe you saw some example standards that you think are important to address, or some that you saw that you think are not appropriate. We're interested in whether in the example developments that we shared, if there are aspects of those projects that you particularly like or didn't like, that would be useful to hear, or features that you would like to see in Capitola. So again, this is the starting point. Receive some preliminary input from you. We're going to have the community meeting next week, get some more input, and then we can use that to develop more content to bring back to you. And any other comments or questions that you have about this process, we'd love to hear about that now as we move forward in this effort. So with that, conclude my presentation and bring it back to the commission.
And I was just going to add to that, that if there aren't specific questions for us, this is a work session item, but we do have a member of the public here, or a couple of members of the public. If we want to open public comment, you're welcome to do so within a work session.
I was going to do that now, and then we can talk. So anybody from the public that want to comment on Ben and Ryan's presentation?
Good evening. My name is Rafa Samenfeld. I'm a member of Santa Cruz YMB, a volunteer lead and land use policy consultant. And thanks for listening to me this evening. No, I, I think everyone shares the goals of having the mall be a redevelopment site that, that meets a ton of community needs and provides many benefits to the community. And I appreciate that we're being thoughtful about how we're going to get there. I think there are a couple of aspects I wanted to make sure that you're thinking about in, in the, the, uh, design process. And where I wanted to start with is the floor area ratio or FAR. Right now, the, I believe the, the zoning code for the mall limits the FAR to 1.5. And with some sort of subjective, uh, public benefit requirements that allows the planning commission to increase that to 2.0. Now, if we're increasing heights to 75 feet, I don't know that, that even a FAR of 2.0 isn't necessarily going to get us the, the floor area that makes a feasible project. I think if you look around the state, if you look at other mall redevelopment projects, you'll see that those, those FARs tend to be, I think, more in like the three to five area. And so, so as you're thinking about, uh, how to facilitate a project, you're going to want to be thinking about, like, how do we, how do we get a feasible floor area, including a, a, a good FAR? And be thinking about incentives that can get over the two to something that, that is a viable project. If the city wants to, uh, the TOT revenue that comes with a hotel, for example, it needs to, to provide standards that facilitate hotels. Right now, there are a couple of bills on the governor's desk that will potentially eliminate the use of the state density bonus law for hotel projects. And that, so it's going to be really important if the city wants to make sure that a hotel project's feasible, that, that the city's own zoning standards really facilitate that project. So again, make sure that, that the FAR is feasible for a hotel as well. And that also goes for parking. I think the parking minimums in the city of Capitola right now are still too high, especially for family-size units, because the city currently requires two parking spaces for any home that's more, any home in a multifamily project that's more than 750 square feet and still requires 1.5 parking spaces for apartments that are between 500 and 750 square feet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Yeah, so you presented a lot of material here for us to take in, but I guess we'll just start. Any commissioners want to speak up first?
Yeah, and following the meeting, we'll post this presentation for you as within the agenda.
Okay. What do we all think's the most important stuff to include? Want to start? Somebody go first.
Yeah, I don't, I'll, I'll jump out there. My, uh, for me, I like to just take a step back before we get too far into even this nice features and those are great presentations. I felt like I should get some college credits for a design there. That was, that was really a good presentation, but, and I think there's a lot of options that we're going to have to look at. I like to go back a little bit to just function and, and looking out for the best interest of the city. I can appreciate, you know, YMB's concerns, and they, they have a, you know, something that they want to push forward through the city, as does, you know, Merlot-Geyer. And obviously, they need to be able to benefit from this. But this is a big jump from where we were in 2019. And, you know, I, I happened to be on the planning commission then, and we had a great presentation that I felt like, wow, we could, this is something we could work with. We were a couple hundred units off, I think, of housing, but we're talking like 600 and 800. Now we're quite a bit higher than that. And here, and my concern is this for the city is, if anyone's aware of where we are financially in the city, it's not looking great for us. And, and I think down the road, where, where we need to look at protecting the city on the revenue side is going to be hotels, as mentioned, and, and retail. And so while I understand that we're, we're tied with this HCD requirement of these homes, and that may benefit Merlot-Geyer, if they're wanting to get into the housing business, I'm not really sure what their commitment is there. But to me, it takes away the city's ability to bring in income and, and be able to support the city and our, and those that live in our community by having this retail space. So what I, I really didn't see there, I, I know what we're talking about is housing units, but I don't see what we have as far as like retail space, functional retail space. And, you know, right now, the, the mall is, you know, while it's, it's functioning, you know, we've, we've lost quite a bit of tax revenue over the years, not having some of those larger anchor stores. I, I know right before, you know, I transitioned off the board, we looked at, the Sears was sold out to Merlot-Geyer, but we had three anchor stores that we're looking at going in there at the time, which would have benefited us over these last seven or eight years. So I guess I was, I'm, I was hoping to hear more about how we would have that cross of retail and housing units, and how that, that would reflect on hopefully supporting the city, whether it's hotels or anchor stores, and trying to bring some vitality back to, you know, an area that's been sitting, for the most part, dormant for, for many years. So, you know, we jumped from the last, the fifth cycle of 143 homes to 1336. And now with these, what feasibility requirements, we're looking at quite a bit of significant jump in homes for Capitola. Really, you're looking at doubling the population. So with that, I'd like to see, how are we going to support the infrastructure here? So there, the city has basically four impact fees. None of those are effective here. So do we have a way of methodology to start an impact fees for the roads along 41st? Because even, even at the 600 and 800 homes we were talking about, six or seven years, whatever that was, years ago, there was concern about the, how that was going to impact 41st Avenue, which is already a busy street. So is there a way we just step back a little bit and talk about the larger project of retail mixed with homes? Are we just looking at jumping into the housing business and filling the mall property with homes? I guess that's my, one of my questions and concerns.
I think for tonight, it's good to get these comments, and we'll bring back more information at the next meeting. So great comments.
Well, let me be more specific, Ben. If we're going to Google comments, I'd like to see the city specifically look at some type of impact fees to support building of this type of magnitude in that area. You know, I, I think as we move through the project, we can, I mean, to me, the designs are great, but it seems like we're way ahead of some of the other issues that are out there, that are of concern to our community. And so I guess the impact fees would be a big one. Infrastructure, who pays for that? And how do we get that there? And then I guess, you know, I, I'd like to know a little bit about Merlot-Geyer's commitment to this project. You know, I, I know they're here to make profit, and I'm 100% behind you. I want you to make a profit and be a, a business out there that's just- I want you to make a profit and be a business out there that's sustainable, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're looking out for the best interests of Capitola. I mean, I know you have a mall for sale right now in Hayward, and, you know, I don't, you know, I hate to see this as something where you're flipping a project over to make a dime and then leave us with something that, you know, our community can't work with. So I guess those are a couple of my concerns and comments that I'd like to see addressed. So, thank you.
That is quite a comment to follow up right there. So I agree with, you know, with this opportunity with Capitola, I think it was one of the meetings that either this, one of our commission meetings, or maybe a council meeting earlier, that TOT tax revenue is like one of our biggest shares right there. So to be able to pass that up and seeing that's what's coming down fiscally, just being more diversified and just maximize those kind of like revenue streams, really, I think, would be, you know, really prudent for our community. Saying that, are we just talking about design aspects right now, or are we open to questions for?
We're open to questions. And we did hire, as part of this, I think there's $10,000 as part of the budget for economic analysis. So we will be looking at that in the overall project.
And that, I appreciate that. Where does that fall into this process? I mean, we're looking at, end of October, we're going to be starting meetings, and moving forward, is that?
Yeah, we're trying to schedule our kickoff meeting with the economic piece to this, so internally with staff, but it'll be throughout. It'll be part of this through the December adoption.
Great, thank you.
Seeing that, where, you know, it was a great presentation from staff and everything, I really appreciate all the great work. Is there any conversation where we're looking at, like, LEED certification for any of these buildings, just because, you know, with fees going up and future residents coming, is that a consideration that's being brought in?
It's not been something we've discussed yet. Is that something that, you know, the standards in California are very high in terms of building code, and we'll be updating our building code at the end of this year. But if it's something that you would like to see incentivized, usually when you do a LEED standard, there's some type of incentives for that to cover the cost, but is that?
Yes, yeah.
Something that you'd be interested in?
I'd love to see that. And just from a design standpoint, I've seen so many projects as traveling around, and I've been lucky enough to see a lot of these projects, the Santa Ana ones, like right down the street from my family right there, in Orange County. Oftentimes, I've seen other projects where the material is out of, or the design is out of place, or the color palette is out of place with the community on that. So if we could really focus in using either sustainable materials, or something that really speaks to the heart and DNA of Capitola, that'd be really great, too. I know the community, I've seen so many community meetings where there's a lot of pushback, saying like, this does not really fit into the design of our community, so just really emphasizing on that.
Is there a reason that the wrap, so the two different types of parking, the podium parking and the wrap parking that was shown on the slide in the presentation, is there a reason we're not thinking about sub, like underground basement parking? And my concern, I guess, generally, is that the parking, like, as it sits right now, the parking takes up a lot of the street, you know, the area that's immediately adjacent to the road. If we build up and we build out to the edge, podium parking does make the approachability of those sections of the building, you know, not as favorable, in my opinion. It's just, there's nothing down there that the people can, or take in, like a commercial space. Is there any way to put the parking underground?
Ryan, do you want to answer this one?
Yeah. So, you know, throughout, throughout the Bay Area construction costs, or outer greater Bay Area construction costs are quite expensive. And I think what we're not seeing very often, at least, is underground parking, especially in the last five or six years with the rate at which construction has increased in cost. But what we are seeing are folks tailoring podium and wrapped projects so that the parking structure has minimal exposure to the street or sidewalk, and that in large part, it is wrapped with either commercial or residential uses. I think, you know, in light of where retail is today, and the fact that people are shopping, you know, substantially online, not exclusively, but substantially more than they used to, that we will have residential, true residential neighborhoods within the site where residential units activate, are necessary to activate the sidewalk, or residential program elements such as lobbies, the gym component, or other, you know, spaces are going to be on that frontage. But I do think that if you are careful, and we can institute the right criteria, that there are many examples of successful podium and wrapped multifamily projects.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I think, I think my concern is just, I think in the last iteration, when we saw it in 2019, and when it was that, how all of the, you know, all the retail was on the bottom, they had a few streets section through those, the block of the, you know, the parcel. And then they had, you know, second story, there was a recreation area that was elevated off the street. They had a city, a town square, that kind of stuff, that, you know, having different elements and approachability of retail and theaters stuff. Do you remember, DJ, how it was where there's, you know? But anyway, that was my big takeaway. And...
Any more?
I'm still thinking, thank you.
Okay. I would echo the comments of my commissioner friends here to the right. Revenue is important. We've lost a lot of revenue because the big stores basically disappeared. So whatever we do, we need, and I don't know exactly how we do it by code, but we need to entice commercial retail for certain, and certainly one or more hotels, because we do get a lot of revenue out of that. That being said, the community, by, from my perspective, and particularly if you read Reddit about Capitola, they're worried about three things in particular. One is public meeting spaces. They really, when we redesign this mall, they want an emphasis on public meeting spaces. Then there's a note in some, from some community members, that the mall is actually turning in now, today, into a little bit of the, well, I'm probably in that age bracket, where we used to all hang out at the mall, right? They're doing that again. And so that's an example of where the younger community would like to have some congregation spot, and the mall is the perfect spot to do that. So that's an important element for them. Traffic is the number one thing that people are really worried about, is how do we manage traffic? So how we codify street design, I don't know exactly how you do that, but something that will address the 41st and Capitola Road traffic, as well as the internal traffic in the mall, so we don't have these, you know, jam zones inside the interior part of the mall. The one at, the Mountain View one, I'm familiar with, because it's close to where I used to work, they did a really good job of managing traffic. They don't have any traffic problems there. Same thing, that's the one on San Antonio, as well as the Sunnyvale one, I'm fairly familiar with, they did a good job there. And parking is another concern of everybody, so maybe these podium or wrapped things solve that problem, I don't know. But we need to, we need to lower our standards on parking per unit from, like the delegate here said, that, you know, our parking rules are really too tailored towards a car-centered community, and we need to reduce that to force people to not just drive to this place. And the third thing, which has been brought up is infrastructure, like who's going to pay for, the infrastructure is needed to support this mixed-use thing, which presumably will, you know, need more water and more sewer than a mall. I'm sure we will, because of all these units we're going to put in there. So how do, how do we figure that out? And that's not necessarily part of our, what you're doing on the code side of this thing. I don't, personally, don't think we need to be overly prescriptive in the design, and the massing, and the colors, and all that stuff. You know, we shouldn't be designing a mall, some architects should be designing a mall.
But I do feel that we, oh, I'm sorry, don't mean...
You are the architect.
Oh, I just feel, I just wanted to, can I interject really quickly?
Yeah.
I just feel like there's a, we do need to be involved, because I feel like if everything is prescribed for us, and we can't control those objective standards to that level, they're going to build, you know, straight out to, remember how Braemer, along Braemer, there was a big, just a flush building, like, all the way along Braemer? If we didn't have any type of say in that, you know, that's, developer just is going to, they are going to build a mall, and it's going to look like that.
You don't want a, like, a Russian design block where everything looks the same.
Yeah, yeah.
But we, I'm saying, let's not overly prescribe what we want in terms of massing and setbacks in color. Give them some guidance that we want this to be broken up, and it's not a monolithic block, absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt you, Paul.
Because if you go to Russia, that everything looks the same.
Brutalistic, yeah.
So I guess that's it. I don't know if that's much helped you.
That's helpful. It is. And it's interesting, in Santa Cruz, like, what makes, like, what is the design of Santa Cruz? And it's oftentimes the mix and the vibrancy that makes it. So I think that's something we'll have to be thinking about as we create this, is it's unique, the architecture, there isn't one type of architecture that fits. So it really is that kind of diversity in design and scale that works here. Those are the questions we'll be asking, too, to make sure we...
People will be vocal about what they don't like, and I know, I know one thing, I, you don't want me involved in doing the design, because that's just not my skill. So Courtney may have that skill set, so I leave it to the people who are paid to do that type of work. And I saw some great examples of what looked good and what did not look good, and I think our community will be pretty vocal about that. So I appreciate the work you guys did on putting that together. Thank you.
I also, it looks like, go ahead, Nathan, you can go, but it looks like Jameis has his hand up, and I think he'd also like to chime in, so.
If you don't mind, you guys are all asking wonderful questions. I just, I just wanted to introduce myself. You probably haven't met anybody from Merlot and Geyer in a while, maybe since 2019, when we submitted that project, maybe some of you attended that meeting we had in the Sears Building. I'm, I was at the city council meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I've been working with Katie and Jamie, and now Ben, just answering questions and giving them some of our feedback. And just wanted to let you know that this process is definitely a precursor to a bigger planning process that we'll be much more involved in and touching on a lot of the questions that you're asking. I'm making note of the questions you're asking. I could go into and give you detailed answers about infrastructure and traffic and all those things. There's, right now is probably not the right time, unless, unless everyone wanted to stay here a little bit longer. But I just wanted to let you know that this is definitely not, you know, the last conversation. We're hoping that we can have a set of zoning code regulations that we can design a project that will work for everybody, and will meet the design objectives that you guys lay out. It'll also allow us to justify tearing down portions of existing operating commercial retail, and hopefully create some more housing opportunities. And we've talked about hotels, we've talked about affordable housing buildings, so all those things are very much on our mind, and something, you know, things that we've done in other projects that we've worked on throughout the state, as well as just other parts of the West Coast. So I just wanted to make that note. I'm happy to answer any questions to the extent that there are any, but I just wanted to chime in there a little bit.
Thank you for that. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. So as I'm a newer commissioner, I'm trying to, the landscape of all the changes that are happening at the state level, and one of my questions was, you know, with us rezoning this, would it fall under that, the CEQA exemption, under that, those new assembly bills?
So we're looking into that, because the CEQA exemption is tied to rezoning under the housing element. And we just did, this is not a required rezone, we're updating our zoning standards. So we are in dialogue with, Leila's been assisting us, and Ben, we've been going through this. It's new state law that came into being on, I think, July 1st. So we're really, we're doing the analysis now, but otherwise, we would tie it to our housing element update, and the updated just EIR assessment that was tied to that. So anything to add to that? Leila, or Ben?
Nothing for me.
No, I think you've about covered it. Yeah, we're definitely taking a look at that. If we can find an applicable exemption, obviously, that would be great. We can streamline the process much more easily. But, you know, we'll have to kind of take a look, and we're reviewing the previous environmental documents, you know, prepared for the housing element and the general planning EIR, and just seeing if there's any streamlining we can look into there as well, keeping in mind, you know, that there is not really a project, per se, you know, in terms of what we think of as a, you know, construction project before us. But obviously, for this process, we'd like to, we'd like to see how effectively and quickly we can do it as well.
Awesome, thank you.
And the EIR, the analysis within our housing element did include the 75 feet and the additional units.
Actually, I do have a question for you, Jameis, because you have a lot of properties around the country. Are you seeing the end of the big stores, you know, the anchor stores, or in general? Is there any hope for them coming back, or they're gone?
There's definitely been, there's definitely been a rightsizing, that's a great question. So as you, as was mentioned, our 2019 plan included a theater. Theaters have completely pulled out of the space. No one's signing new leases for theaters. A lot of the theaters that we have, they're either closing, or they're, they're really, they're really struggling. The whole delivery model, as you were, with streaming and everything, has really changed and impacted those businesses. So a number of the tenants who we would have been vying for to take a theater box, for example, or have gone bankrupt, and those who are still operating are not really expanding. So that's, that's one example. In terms of the boxes, they're definitely shrinking their footprint. We're not seeing, the most active users in, you know, kind of larger occupiers of space are the TJ Maxx, the Marshalls, the Ross, the Nordstrom Rex, you know, the off-price retailers, that's really who we see expanding, and then the grocery store categories. And, you know, what's interesting, in this location in particular, you have Kohl's, Macy's, and Target, and Ross, that will all essentially remain, you know, as you noted on the map before, and then you have Trader Joe's and Whole Foods kind of across the street. You've got a lot of retail already here. And so it is, it is a pretty competitive market from that perspective. And, and as was mentioned, with, you know, construction costs have really, really gone to a level that the rents that a lot of those retailers can pay can no longer justify the cost of them being on the ground floor of a multifamily building. The cost of building that concrete structure to kind of provide them with the bay depths and the loading, and the clear heights that they need for them to operate effectively are extremely challenging in, in a mixed-use, a vertical mixed-use context. You know, they'd need to be a minimum 30, 35,000 square feet, they're very deep, the loading demands are significant. So that's, that's why it was mentioned, you know, the 2019 plan, that was a life, it feels like a lifetime ago, when those projects, you know, that project would have been told to just not viable in the current, the current market that we're looking at, both from an occupier, you know, demand perspective, as well as just from a rent-to-cost differential.
Thank you. What about hotels? Do they integrate into, well into, you know, this type of design?
There's, yeah, where there's opportunities with hotels, you know, the fearful of them being out there is a unique... that you have there is a unique in that it was, it was constructed, I think, at a time when a concrete, you know, podium structure made sense. It's very difficult to, for a hotel to pencil with structured parking today, at least a limited service or, or, you know, the type of hotel that would likely be here, which, you know, maybe it's an upscale or an extended stay. So it's typically a surface parked four or five-story wood frame construction. And so where there's probably opportunity here, as was noted, we have a number of surface parking lots that have to remain because of leasehold controls. So like Target, Kohl's, Macy's, even some of the banks that are adjacent to us that we don't own, there are controls that those parking lots have to remain. And so they have to remain, but they also potentially, they can be utilized. And so the thought is, in some of those instances, placing a hotel adjacent to some of those surface parking lots is a smart way to take advantage of that surface parking, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
So yeah, to answer your question, the hotel, hotel use is definitely something we think would make sense.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments, commissioners? Any more questions from us, Ben, or of us? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, where are we? We are on public hearing 6C, Cliff Drive Resiliency Project. Thank you, thank you, Jameis. You can head to bed now.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, good, good evening, commissioners. And I also just want to thank the whole team. Thank you, Ben, for being here tonight and assisting with us and answering questions. I'm going to go through this really quickly. At our last planning commission meeting, we had LCP and LUP updates that were tied to the Cliff Drive Resiliency Project. The Cliff Drive Resiliency Project has had multiple public outreach meetings as well as updates to the city council as part of this project. We're tasked with updating our long-range planning documents and our implementation plan, the zoning code tied to this development. So go to the next slide. So really the purpose is to address bluff erosion, sea level rise and stormwater drainage. And this is along Cliff Drive. So if we can go to the next slide. So the project direction at city council in August, they selected alternative three, which is full bluff protection. This is a continuous bluff stabilization, includes a class one multi-use path, cannoli ritz sections as needed, and then overlooks. The plans that are out there right now are not the final plans. This is something that's going through development with the city council. The approach to this project is to really safeguard those areas that are most at risk right now. And as this is one of the major throughways for the city of Capitola, it's a really important project in order to keep that connection from Santa Cruz in through our village. On September 4th, we first looked at these changes. At that meeting, the planning commission recommended a positive recommendation for the changes that will implement the zoning code. There are a few outstanding amendments to the land use program amendments. We'll go to the next slide. So quickly, this is showing the possible improvements, including the bike lane and then an area for viewing. And this is on our website. If anyone from home is watching and wants more information on our public works page, they have a page that gets into all the details. Next slide, please. This is a section showing the class one lane, the cars, bicycle on the inside, in the land side and parking. Like I said, right now, this is all, it hasn't been approved by the city council, the final design, but this is what we'll, they are considering. Next slide, please. And this is showing the possible phasing based on the areas that are in most, at most risk. Next slide. So why we are doing this, it's we need to update our code and our long-range planning documents in order to be able to issue a coastal development permit for the Cliff Drive project in the future. Next slide. And the LCP land use amendments, the four that are listed here were in the original packet that you saw at our last planning commission meeting. And if we go to the next slide, the changes that have happened since then, this is the list that was provided in your staff report, very specific changes to their references to bicycles in which we updated that to multimodal transportation. Also just outlining, there were, there's some numbering issues there that have been fixed, removing RTC references that were, that should be removed. Also fixing a policy statement regarding the 50-year planning horizon. One, another item that came up at the meeting was to remove the stormwater requirement for stormwater filtration and species requirements. That has been removed. And then there was an additional reference to Southern Pacific Railroad when it should be the Regional Transportation Commission. And we also removed language around acquisition of right-of-way by the RTC of Capitola's right-of-way. So. And then the Hooper Stairs, the first thing, that was outdated information. So with that, I do have those sections available that we could pull them up. In your packet, they were highlighted, the changes. So if there are any questions, this concludes my presentation. And tonight we're recommending, recommending that the city, that adopt a resolution, the planning commission is recommending that city council approve the amendments to the land use plan, chapters two and seven. So with that, I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the staff, of the staff on this?
You'd only, and I, you know, it seems like we're all the way through this project, but we're talking about Cliff Drive Resiliency and really a big portion of that, I think, is about helping protect our wharf. And I think we know that we were getting a lot of bounce back from the ocean during the storms. That's kind of about the middle section of the wharf. At least that's what I understand. And, but with that, I'm not sure why, and I understand that if there's private property to the south or to the east of the, of the Hooper staircase there, but it seems like whatever we do there, we need to tie in with the homeowners so that that is protected all the way around, protect Hooper's Beach, the staircase. Is that part of the plan? And I didn't see it in page three, so I'm not sure where we tie in.
So that came up at the last city council meeting and the direction was for city staff to begin working with the private property owners and seeing, because this is public funds, the funds cannot be utilized to, for improvements in front of the property owners. But we are going to start working together to make sure that their planning will tie in seamlessly with the city and just have a combined working relationship. So our.
That's, that's all I'm asking for is that we work with them so as a consistent, contiguous wall that protects around that area. And while it's private property, it has a major effect on Hooper's Beach and the wharf, I think. So I think it's important that we make that part of the overall plan so it's not just piecemeal. And then, you know, I appreciate you putting the multimodal part in there. I guess, you know, I asked questions about the class one bike lane before because it's like the class one bike lane to nowhere. Basically it terminates at the end of the lower parking lot. So, you know, I don't know if we can put wording in there. I know at one time the city, I think I sent you, had mentioned with RTC to, we supported the ultimate trail with the option A with the trail next to it. And now we have a letter from the RTC, and I don't know if you folks have seen it yet and my colleagues here, but there were questions they responded to from one of our city council members, city council member Jensen and Mayor Clark, basically stating that their plan is to keep everything on the corridor, including over the trussel. So I think that really helps us with that concern of bicycle safety is getting it through our town. And, and I can certainly see having that class one bike lane coming down Cliff Drive as it comes in off of Opoclast and these other areas where they could tie into that. But I see that as a great opportunity for now is having a safe thoroughfare for bicyclists and pedestrians to get through the town without having to go through our village, which one would violate our municipal code and two, really would just be unsafe for people. So I don't know if you can tie that into this process as you move forward, but just a thought. And I appreciate you letting me make the comments.
Thank you.
Okay. So I always nitpick this stuff, as you know, but the one, the one thing that confuses me, page 837 in our document talks about Hooper Beach. The original LUP said that was a private beach. This version says it's city-owned. So I'm confused, is what's truth and what's fiction?
This is city-owned.
When did this, was it really owned by Esther H. Hooper at one point? Which that's what the original language said, just struck out now. The city must have bought it or something at some point.
I do not know the history, but I do know that that was verified, that it is city-owned property.
Okay. That, that ties into Commissioner Welch's comments about working with the owners, property owners above that beach, which I strongly recommend. There are a couple nitpick things. Page, you look at policy 11, now the new number is 11-7. Provide adequate parking is the, is the policy and the implementation is, A was erased and B is now the new A. And talks about developing concessionaire agreements, doesn't seem to tie into the policy. So that's just one oddity I found. The only other thing I had is I think on policy.
You know, that, it is strange because it's under the implementation under A, but it ties back to policy two or 11, I think it's two dash six. This is under policy two dash seven, which is page 35 within the LUP. So we could move that. That's an easy one within the recommendations. I'm just going to take a note.
Yeah, it's kind of a nit, it doesn't matter. Materially, it doesn't matter. And then just while you're making corrections. Something in policy, now policy two dash 14. We don't, we didn't strike out some of the original language. Now I'm lost in exactly what I was trying to get there. Up doesn't matter. Oh, I think it's the last sentence of value, the potential for continuation of the Grand Avenue Bluff Top Path from Hollister to Escalona.
Yeah, I think we did have that all struck out. And I'm not sure why it didn't make it into this. Yeah.
Okay.
Shall we strike that? That makes sense at this point.
Yeah, but this policy applies to the city, right? It's everything, I guess. Yeah, we are, we should be focused on the Cliff Drive elements of this. Anyway, other than that, I think it's, it's good what you, you took all those notes that we took last meeting, they seem to be all, they all have been implemented, which is fine. So with no other comments.
We should open the public hearing.
Yeah. With no other comments from us, we open it up for public comment if anybody would like to make any. Okay, hearing none. We come back to the commissioners, any more deliberation before we have a recommendation? And then we're going to, recommendation will be on the resolution, which is, our version of this is page 830, this voluminous document, resolution 25 dash four. Anyway, any, any other comments before we move on to taking a motion? Nope. Okay. Does anybody want to volunteer a motion for this?
If you would like, I could read out loud the suggested amendments that I heard and then someone could ask those to be combined into a motion for the resolution. So the amendments that were requested were to move policy two dash seven, the implementation section, to policy two dash six. For policy two dash 14, strike the last sentence, which is evaluate the potential for continuation of the Grand Avenue Bluff Top Path from Hollister Avenue to Escalona Avenue concurrent with any development proposal for parcels adjacent to this area. And with that, if you agree with those, you can make a motion and ask those to be incorporated into the, motion with those amendments.
I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend those amendments to the city council and adopt the LCP amendments that you just spoke of to be included.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Q.
Aye.
Commissioner Welch.
Aye.
Chair Christensen.
Aye.
Chair SD.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you very much. That closes the public hearing section. We move on to the director's report.
First, I just want to thank you that I know that this first kickoff meeting was quite long. There's a lot of information. So you passed your first class 101 on objective standards. Nice job. But we appreciate the feedback tonight and looking forward to this process. The only update I have tonight is just a reminder that next week on Wednesday, there is a community meeting at New Brighton and hoping to generate a lot of interest in this. So please tell your friends, tell your neighbors. We'd love to get a lot of participation. And it's on the 41st Avenue Corridor Plan and the Capitola Mall. And just really want to understand the vision of the people of Capitola. So, but with that, I've got, that's my only update this evening.
What was the two other meetings that?
Oh, two other meeting dates. Thank you. October 30th and November 19th.
6:00 PM or 5:00 PM?
Would you rather start early? We could start early. The special meetings, we could start at 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM. Is anybody in agreement with that? Okay with me for what it's worth.
The 30th, I'm sorry, the other one was 19. 19, thank you so much.
October 30th, November 19th. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will adjourn to the next meeting, which is the special meeting on the 30th of October at 5:00 in the afternoon. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.